Doug, I need your help here. We're going to start the meeting, buddy. Thank you. So, roll call.
I note that everybody is present.
Do you want me to help me with the pledge of the flag, please? Thank you. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? By anybody? If not, we'll move that to the consent agenda, which includes the council meeting minutes of May 10th, the council pit report, and a routine contract amendment for takeups engineering. You can pull any one of them out or provide me a motion for all three. Motion to accept consent items, let's show.
Second.
Motion from Scott, and I'm going to take him second from Dave.
John.
I stand corrected, John. You sound like Dave. Okay, all those members, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay. Motion carried, thank you. Guest presentations, starting with Steve with Sheriff's Office.
How's this?
Great.
Yeah, okay.
Awesome.
So, all things considering, looking through this, not, there wasn't anything I was super concerned about. Double digits and citations and warning issues. We have one car that was broken into, one utility trailer that was broken into where it looks like a bunch of landscape equipment was stolen from. More so, this month, in some of our neighborhoods, we've been having support pirates stealing packages off people's property and whatnot, specifically Sunday and yesterday. Today, I've spent a good chunk of my time in Millersburg today. I caught a car that didn't belong in the Sedona neighborhood. Arrested that male on warrants and towed his car away. I wasn't able to prove that he was connected to the theft. He didn't have anything in his vehicle, but just a car that shouldn't be in that neighborhood or that person, not even from Inland County. So, please keep your eyes out. Let us know if you see anything. This is where, like rain cameras or any type of surveillance cameras come in handy, because if something did happen, then we can go back and prove that or put some pieces of the puzzle together. We do have pretty good footage from both Sunday and Monday. Both times they're in different vehicles, different people. I don't think they're connected at all. Totally separate incidences, but we're not able to get license plates because the vehicles are so far, but at least we have vehicle descriptions and people descriptions that we can keep an eye out for. And like the car today, when I stopped him, he didn't match the description of our cars Monday or Sunday. So, just anything shady, people driving by that don't belong, slow drivers. I personally think this gentleman was waiting for like a UPS or FedEx truck to come by today. But yeah, he wasn't super friendly, so yeah, please keep your eye out. A few more animal calls in May. I expect there to be much more in June because of nice weather. Dogs are going off leash, barking and stuff like that. We have a couple of animal control staff that'll, that handles those for us to help relieve us of those duties, and they do a very good job, so. Any questions for me?
Just a comment. You had some prowling going on, on either Rosemarie, Megan, or in that area, a week or two ago. What was called in, but there were additional episodes of that that did not get called in. I've had it all later, so just... I think it would people joking around, just going around tapping on windows and running away. I think that's what's going on there.
Yeah, and we might get some of that with the kids getting out of school and whatnot. I've been saying this for almost 11 years. If it doesn't happen in front of me, I don't know about it unless people call in.
Exactly.
Or unless I stop and talk to somebody on the side of the road.
Precisely.
It's not a waste of our time. Worst-case scenario, I'll just call you by phone and you'll just say, hey, it might be nothing, it might be something, but can I give you this info? And at least it's documented somewhere, which will never go away. So yeah, especially with the slow-moving vehicle. If it's just like, hey, I don't think it's anything, but this car with this license plate drove by super slow, can you just document it? That takes two minutes of my time, and that'll never go away. And that stuff that gets shared with briefings and whatnot, so it's, none of these calls are a waste of time.
So, Kim, could we put that in the minutes? That's last few sentences that he, that he just stated, so that somehow we get that word out better amongst the community. Seem appropriate, I think. Thank you. Any further questions?
Absolutely. Activity at the truck stop?
There's a couple of crashes there. We had a couple of calls there. One actually, I think, was about an employee in May, but much, much more quiet. Yeah, yeah, much more quiet. Yeah. You won't hear me say the Q word very often. But, no, I have to go to, I have to go right now.
To Halsey?
Yeah.
Tell him hi for us.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
If anybody wants to do ride-along, we're super busy, but it's some of, some of the best times to do ride-along. Nobody at Millersburg reached out yet, so if you want to, I mean, I work Monday through Friday. Anybody can ride along. You won't, I won't make you go through the application process or not. I've had Harrisburg, Syo, Mill City, some of the city councils, and they're, they're along. They've had, they've had a good time. So, we'll just, wherever you want to do. If you want to stay in Millersburg the whole day, we can stay in Millersburg the whole day. So, yeah, you are a... I'll leave that up to your boss. She wants a badge, too. Just an open invitation.
And we've passed it on before to them as well.
Yeah, shoot me, shoot me an email.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is time for public comment. We have a couple out in the audience. We have people online as well, right?
We do.
So hopefully they can hear me. If anybody would like to speak, please get your hair, come on forward. If you're online, raise your hand or speak up. Welcome to hear from me.
I'm seeing no activity.
There'll be another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting as well. All right, then moving on to public hearings. We have two public hearings relative to funding and budgets and so forth. The first one deals with certifying eligibility to receive state shared revenue funds. Certain criteria has to be in place in order for us to do that. And the second will be to receive state shared, to receive those funds. One is to be eligible for the funds, and two is to receive the funds. So I'm going to open the public hearing on state shared revenue funds and ask, I guess, you to give a brief overview, if you would. Somebody?
We can. So this is revenue we received annually from the state on a number of areas. First, streets, liquor taxes, and cigarette taxes. Real funds, so those are the primary ones that we accept. And again, as Mayor just mentioned, we have to show our eligibility, which we do. This resolution identifies we have to provide police protection, fire protection, street construction maintenance, lighting, sanitary, sewer storm, sewer, planning, zoning, or one or more utilities. We only have to do a portion of those. We have to have all of those, so. We have to provide four more of those, which we pretty much hit on all of them.
We hit them all.
So, that is where we'd like to move forward with this.
So there's two different actions here. One is to prove that we are eligible for those funds. The section action, second action, is to move to receive those funds. Are there any questions or comments from anybody regarding this hearing? Online or otherwise?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Per what we did last year, we did these in one motion. So that's why I have it like that on the screen, just to make sure. We don't have to do these separately. We did these as one motion.
Yeah, my agenda says two actions.
It does look like that, but when I looked at what we did, we did label it like that. We just did them as one motion most of the time.
I'm fine with that. Everybody else is?
And I'd point out, we only have one.
All right. You only have one?
We have three.
The third one's a budget. That's a separate hearing.
Oh, yeah, I got you.
Okay, so we have, first of all, I'm going to close the hearing unless somebody else has a comment. Hearing none, the hearing, hearing none, the hearing is closed. I would entertain a motion to, to adopt Resolution 2022-05 and 06. So moved?
Second.
For a second. I got a Scott and a, and a Dave. Is that okay for you? Okay. Yeah, I know. Sneaking one quick.
Like yourself, though.
I'm talking loud enough, okay? There we go. I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-5, and that's 05, and 2022-06.
Second.
Make a motion, second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried, thank you. Okay, now we'll move into the secondary, dealing with the adoption of the budget and making the appropriations, which be Resolution 2022-07. In our packet is an overview document of that budget, which we can put on the screen if we need to. Want to do that, or? So with that in mind, I'm going to open the hearing for the 2022, 23 budget and, and making the appropriations per that budget. Are there any questions or comments or concerns from anybody? It's in the packet, in detail. Anybody online? More questions?
No hands raised and nobody asking.
Okay. Going once. Pretty significant move, people. Okay, going twice. Hearing closed. I'd entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2022-07, which is the fiscal 2022, 23 budget and appropriations.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-07.
Second. Motion from John, and second from Scott. Any, any further discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carried. I know, I thank Doug for your help.
Yep, thanks for the assist on that, as well as the other community members as part of the, the budget committee. Thank you for having me.
Any council member or staff comments? On any topic? Okay, moving then into city council, city manager's report, first being the fire station.
I'll let assistant city manager, Janelle, move the fire station.
All right, we're getting near the end. I won't read all of the work done in the last couple of weeks, but it's been a long list of final items. And then upcoming work is just a lot of finishing things up. We've had some, did our final punchless walk on Tuesday. No, last Wednesday, sorry. We have, we have multiple punchless walks. We have the, the site one tomorrow. Anyway, we're working toward the end. The financial update is up here. We're getting near the end of paying for this project as well. And a couple, a few upcoming dates we thought you might be interested in. So the furnishings are going in tomorrow. Owner trainings, furnishings being desks and tables and chairs and all that. Owner trainings, the week, this week, actually, they started last week, but we have a lot of new systems that the, the contractors in those specific areas have to walk us through and, and show us how the systems work. Punchless work, certificate of occupancy, we'll have it by the 23rd, I'm sure. They're going for a temporary one, I think, a little bit earlier. But they've passed almost all the final building inspections. Project completion date is set at the 28th, and the move-in date for the cruise is June 30th. We do have a few items that might go past the completion date, just because of what's going on with market right now and everything. Landscaping that may be done, they're working hard on it. If you've driven by trees we're going in today, but there's still some work to do on that. The flashing beacon signals on Old Salem Road are waiting on one part for the flashing sign, and so that may be a little bit delayed. The hood in the kitchen will have to be replaced. We have a temporary one in now. They would not be able to get the permanent one, even though it was ordered back in October. Yeah. So we're still ways out on that. And then, if you look, the striping on the road is going to need to be redone. I don't know what the schedule on that is. The yellow strip. It doesn't quite meet standards, so. That's a few upcoming items. And then, as we've been mentioning for the last several meetings, the ribbon-cutting ceremony, or maybe we're changing the name of that, but the grand opening will be Saturday, July 30th. And invitations will be going out for that, or postcards will be going out in the next week, two weeks, couple of weeks. Any questions on the fire station?
If you haven't had a tour yet, actually, you can still do that between now and the grand opening. Took mine last week. Okay, other projects.
Okay, we wanted to give you an update on one specific project, and we actually decided to update you on this before they started tearing down the existing projects. So our timing was really good. There was a storage, a new storage building approved at our planning commission. It is 33,000 square feet, and it's going to be three stories tall. It's going to go where the old nursery was. You can see it on the map here. It's going in with the other storage buildings that already exist, just giving them more storage to lease. And it's going to be going right where that old nursery was. And then, right as we were putting this on the agenda, they, they started demoing that old nursery, which is great. So if you drive by there, they're starting work on it, which is wonderful. That's the extent of our update. Unless there's any questions on that, just want to let you know, as you saw construction, what the heck was going on.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Financial update. The council report.
We did have some additional things on the update report, if council wanted to.
Well, I wouldn't, I didn't have a credit report, so.
You may have already seen, we had some previous discussions. We just put it in there as far as park maintenance update. Playground wood chips were installed May 17th around our playground. And you may recall, there was quite a bit of, a fair amount of activity on Nextdoor and some others. And just wanted to point out to council, those have been ordered almost two months previously. It wasn't due to some of the comments and things. It's a very specific chip. It's not a chip that you can go out and just purchase anywhere from anyone. It's a, it's a certified chip that meets ATSM standards for fall material for that and from Blacka, that it doesn't have any contaminants or anything in it. We get it through Rexius, they apply it for us. So that was actually ordered in March, and that's pretty typical for how long it takes this one to replace the order, to put them to get it and to put it out. So that's took, taken place. We placed a little over 330 yards of bark material, covering 46,000 square feet of landscape beds in the park. We'd previously had hemlock in there, but we had a number of landscape professionals and others, and architects recommend we go away from that due to problems with deploying in the rain across things and, and how quickly it degrades, because it's already degraded. Last year, you cannot find hemlock in the Pacific Northwest. They had, all of the mills were running so much of the fur from the damaged fires and stuff, no one had hemlock. Absolutely nothing had. Could find it, you were paying through the notes for it on it. But I thought it was just interesting. I thought I'd point out, so our 11-acre park, and this is one of the things that came out in our park's master plan, that we should look at trying to minimize about it. Our park is a very high-maintenance park. It came through that with the beds and things. It's beautiful, but it's also very high, high maintenance compared to what you see in, in most parks. But that would be interesting to share, that the 46,000 square feet of landscape beds we have in our park is more than Albany's five, what they consider their flagship parks, Timberland, Bryant, Montez, and Grand Prairie, and Bowman combined, which are a total of 214 acres. So, we were having, we were, we had been talking earlier this year with Albany because of spraying issues and everything. Everyone's having the same problems that we are with the water, and it's extremely, you may have seen in Oregon. At this point, right now, through June, it's the wettest period they have seen in 81 years in Oregon. So kind of some of the things that we're dealing with there. One is make, you were spraying, as you were, when Randy came in, when we went with our new maintenance supervisor. We did not have anyone licensed for spraying in our park. And the, one of the things that's been a problem during COVID was trying to get people into classes. They were not offering the required courses and things. And even with it, it's about a year and a half period to get through or to opt for the permit licensing that you need for public application. So we had been told previously by our previous license holder that the only one that can spray in the park was someone that had that license. Someone, only those that were working directly underneath them could apply. So we were having, and required a public applicator's license, so we were having a really hard time looking. We finally found one company that has it, but because of the wetness, everyone's so far behind in spraying or anything right now. They're all pushed out two, two or more months because of the wetness. So we actually got ahold of, ordering the farm bag. They were very helpful. They shared with us, there's actually, what we were known, wasn't necessarily true as far as having to have a public applicator's license to spray in the park. If the business has a permit, that they're allowed to do that, and they have personnel that are licensed for commercial applications, as long as for the type of application we're doing, i.e. lawns or beds or things like that, they can in fact spray. But they have to have their employees, as well as the company has to have, meet those conditions. So that opened it up for us, if they have the commercial applicator's license along with the appropriate personnel and an operator's permit. So that gives us more companies that are available to us. But they also said there's an exemption where we can't apply chemicals, as long as the material being applied doesn't have restricted use. So we looked at the chemicals we use, and ours don't. He says you can apply those chemicals. Anyone can apply them in our situation, as long as you follow the label requirements, as long as it's done manually. So you can use a backpack, that's, you know, your hand phone. If that backpack has a battery on it, though, that, that powers it, we can't spray with it. Even though it's the same type of thing, you can't spray because it's, it's powered, so it can't be powered, but we can do that. So we started that, so our personnel are doing that. But we have to be careful. There's a number of things for us to spray. We have to have the right weather. You know, we have to know that we have enough days of dryness in between when we spray. The other thing is, we have to be aware of, it's the wind conditions, because a lot of it's around our fence lines and stuff. We have neighbors that we don't want, that stuff dripping over to them. So we are doing that, and doing that until they get their, their full licensure. I'm going to let Janelle talk about the fence extension at the South Ball Field.
Right, so you might have noticed the fencing up the wings of the backstop at the South Ball Field was extended by 60 feet on each side for a total of 120 feet. So this is something JBO had been talking with us about for a while, and they wanted to partner with us on it. So we agreed to cost-sharing that, and we actually found somebody, Randy found somebody who got quotes and, and who could get it done in a timely manner. So it was done before their first tournament. I think they were actually able to hold because of the weather. Oh, that one was rained out, yeah, shoot. I don't know how many games they've actually played. So we're still working out with JBO how much of it they're going to fund. They, they offered up half, and I know they won't put back on that, but they actually said their fundraiser came in even better than expected, and so they might just take all of it. So that's, that's a project that just got done, and we're excited about, because it was a safety issue for people sitting along the sidelines there with balls flying out of the infield.
And then the final portion in there on the park maintenance, we just kind of highlighted for you some of the things, as far as the rain amounts that we've seen and how that's impacting not only the park, but all the other areas that we have. A lot of people seem to think that the personnel at the park are just dedicated to the park, and we try to remind them that they're not. There, you know, there are, our maintenance personnel, they deal with our streets, they deal with right-of-way, you know, dealing with water complaints, you know, when we see them. So there's a lot of things. The park is a portion of what they do. It's not their total, total job, so we're just on it. So that's having, the impacts we're seeing with the wet spring is impacting not only our park, but all of those other things, such as that have, that we have to deal with as far as our right-of-ways along Old Salem, the ponds that we need to, our detention ponds and stuff that we need to be addressing, so all of those things. So we are hopeful to get back on track. We have our summer help starting tomorrow with them, so that will, will be, but it's, it's, you know, who knows what, what the weather, you know, every time we think we're going to get a break, we get another torrent, so.
I'm going to stick my neck out here a little bit. I understand the hoopla that we went through and all the stress that was occurred was really as a result of a very small handful of people who really didn't take the time to get the facts, okay, many of which you had just talked about. I, I walk this town a lot, and I also walk the park fair amount. And I noticed walking a couple of days ago in the rain throughout the city, I noticed a lot of the beauty strips were full of grass and weeds. Some of the lawns were tall and hanging over, trees were hanging over the sidewalk because of the same reasons we are dealing with in the park. Extremely wet, hard to get out there and work on it. You know, let's just give ourselves a break. These yards I'm looking at typically are in really good shape, but just because of the weather, we're all struggling to get through this. I just, it bugs me that we have to react, we're going to have to react. We are reacting to a small handful of people who really didn't take the time to get the facts and, and that mushroom, so. Shouldn't say that, but I, I can and I did, so. For whatever reason. Anything else?
Yep, one more update. Woods Road Charities path, survey work has been awarded. KND Engineering gave us the low. We got three quotes. They were the low. Within the next couple of months, you'll, you may or may not notice surveyors out there along Woods Road, but that is getting going. And then we'll start the next phase of the project after that, which will be a little bit more detailed layout and figuring out what we're going to do going forward. One other thing I'll mention on the vegetation maintenance side of things, just because I think it was brought up at a prior meeting about Old Salem Road. The county did spray that, I think the day after we talked about it or something. They came through and sprayed it. And so we have been waiting purposefully to have a couple of weeks for the spray to work before we go and cut it. But we are going to be cutting it. That's intended for later this week. Sometimes we have generally done, addressed Old Salem Road sidewalks, and that's, that's the part we're going to address again. It's sidewalk clearance along Old Salem. We just didn't want to go do that right after they sprayed and then waste the spraying with not giving it time to work.
Thank you. Thanks. I, I did have a quick question, Mayor. You mentioned the summer help. What, we, one or two, or what, just one? And what's their sort of schedule, or how much, how many hours do they do a week?
Full-time.
Full-time, okay, excellent. All right, similar to like what we've done before.
And he's been working, doing the weekend cleanings a week.
Is it the same gentleman that we had last year?
No, not the same as last year.
Thank you.
But he's been working with us for a couple of months now.
Okay.
That's it on the updates.
Thank you. Move on to the council update.
Oh, that's right. I forgot to fill out the dashboard.
Again, this one, Janelle gets it up. This is our year-to-date, seeing where we are with regards to our accounts. Again, this one, Janelle gets it up. This is our year-to-date, seeing where we are with regards to our accounts. So as a reminder, as Janelle's pulling those, those up, we lost, for some reason we lost the setting. But the, um, as a reminder of our calendar year, our fiscal year, we're on July 1th through June 30th. So what you will see here is where we are expenditure-wise, that we come towards the end. So you can see of our, uh, our general fund, expenditures so far, total projected, I think that is revenue, correct?
No, that's the total.
Total general fund. So 9.7 billion, 49,000 in parks, emergency services 2.4. I would point out the general fund includes, not emergency services, but the general fund includes the station destruction. The building, um, you'll see that's again, this one, it shows we're over, but that is because, uh, on our building fund, as a reminder, those are fees that we bring in and then we pay those back out to Lincoln County and to the school district. So those fees have been received and some of them may have been from previous year, but so, um, we are not actually, between that, we actually make about 2% off of those transactions on that. Current replacement, we've spent no funds out of current replacement. You can see on the street fund, um, stormwater, sewer, and then water funds, expenditures. Again, a number of those on our, uh, street funds, sewer and water funds, they have, uh, the reason you'll see the expenditures much lower than where they are is because we have capital funds in these. Any questions? We're wrapped.
Okay. Questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Forrest, do you have any?
No report. Thank you.
No unfinished business on the list. Moving to new business. The person which, the person which is a cost of living adjustment. I can go ahead and cover this if you want me to. Uh, if you recall earlier in the fiscal year, we talked about providing a 5% cost of living allowance for staff, given where the economy was going, which is kind of a normal approach in the region as I'm seeing. And we've included that in the budget. So the purpose of this discussion is to now approve that 5% increase in COLA, which would be added to the step increases per the salary schedules. That's one step. The other item would be to talk about Matt, who is not in this category, but yet has not been addressed salary-wise. We have, we have already provided Kevin and Janelle increases earlier at a 7% rate total, which includes a COLA plus 2% performance. They are not on a salary schedule. So our last thing to consider is approval of the 5% COLA for staff, with the exception of Kevin, Janelle and, and Matt, and a 7% increase overall for Matt. Those are the two items that I'm seeking approval for. Buddy, clarify any of that? Anybody? We, we budgeted this and I guess we have a sectioned it in terms of, of an action item. So it's 5% for, for the staff or for employees, with the exception of Rob's reading. Yeah, none of them, none of them. Janelle and Kevin and Matt would get the 10, the 7%.
Janelle and I have already.
Oh, you got the picture.
Yeah, there's, so it's just, just to get basically on the same, same pattern. Matt's on a different schedule time.
Different timeline for Matt.
Matt's date of hire was.
Date of hire is different, right?
These would be effective July 1st.
So you just need a motion?
Yes.
If you can follow what I just said. Actually, see, do you have, do you have it on the board up there?
It is. That will be your motion. Do you have it on there? Oh. A motion to adopt? Cost of living adjustment. Of 5% fiscal year 20, 22, 23. For staff and 7% for community development director.
Well done. Good job.
And you're gonna say effective July 1st, 2022.
Effective July 21, 22.
Okay.
July 1st.
July 1st, 2022. Second.
Second from, motion from Dave, second from John. Do we need any useful comment or clarification by anybody or for anybody? And we were, we're gonna talk this through, so. Okay. That said, then all the favoritists say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Thank you.
Good job, Matt.
You know, we gotta fix something. Got my feet out here anymore. Somebody's gotta start saying nay.
We're not done yet. This was already discussed. That, that part I don't miss.
Okay, moving to capital improvement program.
All right. So we're proposing adoption of the capital improvement program. This was presented along with the budget we went through in detail then. We have not received any comments or made any changes to it. So, um, it didn't raise us in the form of a motion, but we'd be looking for approval of the 22, 2022 through 2026 capital improvement program.
It's a promotion or a question, or question? I was on the committee, so I think it's not appropriate for me to make those motions. Yeah, I guess we are. But I cheered. Let Doug make it.
I move that we approve the 2022 to 2026 capital improvement program as presented tonight.
Second. Okay, thank you. Uh, motion by Mark, second. By Dave. Questions, comments? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Again, thank you. Okay. Deannexation of some property.
So on the agenda this evening, we have the approval of a resolution to formalize the city's intent to deannex property from the city limits for a total of about 167.46 acres. So this part of the, uh, this is part of a larger plan to swap property, uh, within our UGB. You can see there's a, a map here on the slide and we're really just proposing to swap site A, which is generally unbuildable. We'll talk about in a moment for site B. So this is just the first part of that. If you want to hit the next slide for me there, Janelle. So you might say, why do we want to swap and why this property? Uh, why do we want to pull these three properties out of the city specifically? Well, go ahead and hit the slide there for me, uh, Janelle. Specifically, they're unbuildable right now and our comp plan and our zoning makes it look like these are properties that are on the books that could be built with industrial sites, when in fact they really can't be. You see, uh, the site up there, the outline is in red. It's a little hard to see because it's completely underwater. That's the floodway, uh, the FEMA floodway, and that's a very difficult designation to change. It would take a lot of capital improvements to pull that up out of the floodway. Is it possible? Yes. Is it practical? Absolutely not. And that's one of the reasons why we want to pull that out of the floodway. On top of that, the, there's other items listed in the resolution, but there's no access to these parcels, meaning no public streets, uh, to those parcels. And there's, there's, um, the topography in there is a mess. It's very difficult to build on. There's wetlands in there. Litany of reasons why that's not really a viable piece. Go ahead and hit the next slide there for me, Janelle. So swapping these properties takes a number of different steps. And the first action in there is the deannexation that we have before us today. And that deannexation, based on state law, is broken down into three steps. The first action is before you tonight, and that's simply to adopt the resolution of intent to let the public know that you're intending to pull this out. And that's the idea. That bleeds into the second action, which would be a public hearing. And we have that scheduled as well. And that's when everybody can come in and tell you that they think this is a good idea. Sometimes this might be in a residential area where people might have big opinions on it. We're not anticipating big opinions here, but we do still have to follow the state's procedure, which is why we're doing this. The third action in the deannexation alone is to formally remove the property with the adoption of an ordinance. And just to clarify, that's, ordinance is going to be a comp plan amendment and a zoning amendment because it's changing the maps of the city, those two maps. So go ahead and hit the slide for me again. So we do have to take this through the planning commission. Go ahead and hit it one more time for me, Janelle. And these are the dates we have scheduled for those actions. Now you'll notice August 23rd is in red. It's because we haven't formalized that yet through the city council. That is not a standard city council date. We had to schedule that on a special date just to make sure because the state's procedures are very specific. The one action has to be followed by 30 days and that has 50-day action. And when you put it all together, scheduling it was difficult. And so we took one of your work session days on the 23rd and we're just going to make that a regular meeting day as well. Uh, it doesn't, uh, it will take a public hearing. Uh, Forrest and I have talked a lot about this to make sure that our I's are dotted and our T's are crossed. And those dates are up there. So as part of the action today, we're going to formalize that August 23rd date if it's okay with the council.
I would just, I would just add one thing. Unless we see there's a lot of public interest in the earlier meetings, the intent would be for that to be at the normal work session time. So that would be at four o'clock. If we see that there's a lot of interest, we think there's a need to, we may want to have a discussion on moving that to a six, six o'clock, um, meeting on that day or a later meeting for. We don't expect it to be a lot of interest.
No, the, the owners of that property, we've talked with them. They are in support of what we're doing. Uh, we've talked with the owner that owns these, a site we want to swap to, site B, that owner is supportive. So we're not anticipating a lot of public interest in this for sure. Go ahead and hit the slide one more time for me. So if the motions before were a little bit light, this one's gonna make up for it because that's what needs to be read into the record uh, based on the state's very, very specific outline of what needs to happen. So, uh, that concludes my presentation. I'm here for any questions you may have.
We discussed this sometime before, so hopefully everybody's really tuned in already. If not, are there questions or thoughts, concerns? All right, Dave, make a motion.
Motion that the city council has determined that it may be in the public's interest to withdraw the territory identified in the staff report. As such, the city council motions for the initiation of the deannexation process with the adoption of resolution 2022 dash 08 and sets the matter for a public hearing on July 12th, 2022.
Second.
Got that, Kim? Thank you. Any further discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Thank you. Thanks, Matt. Fee schedule. Mr. Nell?
Yep. So last year we consolidated most of our fees within the city into one schedule. And we said we would look at it annually to revise it. So now we're, we're up for that. We aren't proposing very many changes to the schedule. Uh, really most of them are staying the same. The only areas that are proposed to change are in some of our water service fees. And that's really, uh, in the monthly base charge and the rate for hydrant meters. It's just to up those to where the residential and commercial ones are now with the last 3% fee, uh, rate increase that we had a few months ago. And then the larger one is the connection charges. So when those were adopted, they were, uh, in the resolution, it says they'll be escalated based on the CPI, uh, CPIW value, um, of escalation. So we did not do these, well, originally they started in, uh, the beginning of the year, so in January. So the first year we did it in 12 months. The second year we wanted to get these aligned with the rest of the fee schedule. So maybe it was the third year, I don't remember, but we wanted to align them with the fee schedule. So we did not adopt an increase last January. And I believe we discussed that here, that we were going to hold off and go ahead and do, do 18 months or actually I think it works out to 17, uh, increase at this point. So we can align them with the rest of our fee updates. The fee update you see here increased for these is 13.8%, which is a lot. That's what our cost estimate, our cost indexes are doing right now. And if anybody's, their construction cost index and most are aware of those costs are very high right now. So that's, want to just make you aware of that. At this point, we're proposing going ahead and adopting that increase. If you wanted to adopt a lesser percentage increase, we could bring this back to you with the change, but this is consistent with the original intent of the connection target.
And as a reminder, that could go down in the future if the indexes fall.
Right.
Well, it's abnormally high right now and that's reflecting everything else that's going on in the world that could change.
When, I could add, the first year we adopted this, it was a 1% increase. The second year was six. And now we're at 13.
Skip the third.
We skipped half of one of them.
And this is, keep in mind, as Janelle shared, it's, uh, over a 17-month period, so versus 12. So whoever's done things within this last six months or five months got a break.
I tell you, talking with other small cities throughout the three to four county area that we've worked with, with council governments, you don't want to not do this every year. It's pet playing catch-up down the road. You think you might catch heat over this and wait two or three years and try and catch up. So you want to do this on a regular basis, uh, and keeping it current with actual, actual costs. So I support this personally because of that.
I move we approve resolution 2022 dash 09.
Second.
Motion by, from Mark, second from John. Any further discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Janelle, what about SDCs? Are they on a five-year influence? That we renew, we have addressed those charges?
Those are annual as well. I need to look at the schedule on those because they may be coming up on those. Because of the way the original resolutions were adopted, I don't know that we actually have to adopt increases because they were built in, but we'll look into that and bring it back to you. This, this was mainly because we wanted to get in the schedule with the rest.
Yeah. Those are pretty much the only fees that we intentionally left out of the schedule because they operate on their own processes.
SDCs and our water and sewer rates are separate.
Albany's going through a lot of stress right now with these issues. You've got to stay ahead of it. Okay, final item is contract for professional services from David Evans.
All right. So this is our, this is our on-call construction inspection, um, contract with David Evans. Originally, we started this contract in June of 18. We've extended it annually since then. And it will expire at the end of June of this year. We almost put this upfront with the consent agenda along with the Jacobs contract amendment because it's the same type of thing. But there is one different item this time. I just wanted to be able to point out. So the amount of the not-to-exceed contract for the year has varied based on what we anticipate for the need. This year, we've budgeted $50,000 for construction inspection services, which is a decrease from the past because residential construction at least has dropped off for a bit. Uh, but we are adding an additional task for help with our stormwater management plan. And this is, this is required by our MS4 permit. So I've been talking with them about the team that they would use for this and we've added the, the task to support that effort for $30,000 in this contract amendment. And it wasn't the budget that was adopted. Are there any questions? I can try to answer them.
Questions? Those in favor, please. Things are going so well, get ahead myself. Motion, please.
Uh, move to approve contract for professional services amendment five. Second.
Thank you. Dave and Mark, right? Gotcha. Okay. Now, any further questions? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Janelle, you mentioned MS4 permit. Uh, we've identified last year or sometime ago all the things. We've identified last year or some time ago, all the things we have to do. Might be worth talking down the road about where we are on that and what, what kind of adjustments we have made organizationally and work a little ways to accommodate.
Yeah, we could do that. We can do an update at the next council meeting if you'd like or at a work session, whatever.
If you recall, she had quite a large chart of things we needed to do to comply with the MS four permit. And I envisioned some significant manpower drains to make that happen.
We still have a fair amount of work to comply with, everything. We're, we're working on it. This is a big piece, big chunk of that.
There's some leniency as far as several years.
Right, we have a timeline that's established in the permit. Everything, full compliance is, I don't remember the date off the top of my head. It's a couple of years out. But we do have to have a first draft of the stormwater management plan very soon, actually. So we've been talking with them about helping, jumping onto at least get a draft. We can turn in and show progress on that. We started a while ago, but it's been, it's been on hold for a little bit.
I just think it'd be good to keep it in front of us so that when you do need to come to us for more resources, we're all well in tune and, and can support necessary steps when they come. Thank you. That's it for new business.
Mayor? Just briefly, since you asked about SDC, so I just pulled it up real quick. So last, last June, we adopted a new ordinance modifying, revising chapter fifteen point six, system development charges of the Milersburg Municipal Code. And in that, what it states is, "City engineer shall automatically adjust on the first day of July of each calendar year, the city engineer shall automatically adjust, the, make adjustments based on the Seattle Construction Cost Index published by engineering news record, where calculating precision to increase or decrease in index for the period since the last adjustment applying the procedure to figure she used to calculate system development charges in the credit." So, so that is an automatic that we do on July 1st.
I like that. That's, that's a good approval. Sorry, somebody was a little smart here or something. But that applies. So you see us announcing those changes as they occur. You just need to just write it out.
Certainly send an update to all of you so that you know it will go on to our, it goes on our building permit form where we have those all written. I don't know, we're not putting them in the other fee schedule right now, I don't believe. But they're on that form.
Mainly impacts contractors.
Yep.
Still good to know. Thank you. Appreciate it very much. One final call for public comment, either here from the room or online.
Our online participants have left the meeting, so there is no one online.
Thank you. Any else? Questions, concerns? Okay. That said, are there any closing council comments? Kim, can I sign resolutions tonight? I'll come by. All right, no problem.
Question, Mayor, or to staff, just, thank you. Just checking in on the house that we have and just wondering if we might be able to see that at the next council meeting to have discussion and maybe just warn the council if there is any discussion that'd be done.
Possibly.
Possibly.
So it's in the budget for next year. So we budgeted, as we talked about during the budget process, we budgeted thirty-five thousand. So you have one. So that was based on one initial quote. And we have, have reached out to a couple of other companies. We've had one. So the intent is to do something sooner than, than later.
Okay, so.
It's a matter of, with everything else going on.
Yeah.
To get those.
And where are we? I mean, we're just needing to make a decision to move forward with that, correct, with the demolition? Okay. So, all right.
And that, that's the intent, you know, from what we've discussed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else? We've done this meeting in less than an hour. Therefore, the meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-two and a half.
Nice.
So any of the councils that haven't, we're going to try to get some photos for our, those to go out at the station. So if anyone wants to, we, I, I do have a key, so if anyone wants to see.